Good timing, councillor McIlhany. We'll now begin, it being 7pm. Welcome to the Ordinary Council Meeting of Wyndham City this Tuesday, the 7th of April 2020. In the spirit of reconciliation, before we begin this meeting, I acknowledge the peoples of the Cola Nation as the traditional owners of the land on which Wyndham is being built, and we pay our respects to elders past, present and emerging. Please stand for the opening prayer and welcome. We pray for guidance in the council's decision-making to achieve the best outcome for the people of Wyndham. Please be seated. I'd like to welcome and acknowledge councillors and staff here this evening for the OCM. This meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the internet. The recording will of course be archived and made available on council's website. Item number two, apologies and requests for leave. Madam CEO, do we have any apologies or requests for leave this evening?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We don't have any apologies for the meeting this evening. However, I do wish to advise that councillor Mayor Shaw was granted a leave of absence from the 5th to the 12th of April 2020, and has since advised that she no longer requires this leave.
Thank you very much, Madam CEO. As councillor Shaw has indicated, she's withdrawn her leave for the period of the 5th to the 12th of April 2020. We'll therefore move that as a resolution. With that in mind, do I have a mover? Councillor Arn and second by councillor Khan. All those in favour of the resolution? Against? Carrie, thank you. Item number three, declaration by councillors of conflicts of interest or conflicting personal interest in any item of the agenda. Councillors, are there any conflicts of interest that you wish to declare for this evening's agenda?
No, Mr Mayor.
No, there being none, we'll now proceed to the next item. Thank you. Item number four, confirmation of previous meeting minutes. The motion reads that the minutes of the Ordinary Council meeting held on the Tuesday, the 3rd of March 2020, as prepared and circulated, be confirmed. And secondly, that the Special Council meeting held on Monday, the 23rd of March 2020, as prepared and circulated, be confirmed. Do I have a mover? Thank you, councillor Maynard, councillor Villa Gonzalo will second. I will now put the resolution to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carrie, thank you. Item six, officer reports, 6.1 petitions, there are nil. 6.2 strategic reports, nil. 6.3, the policy and advocacy, 6.3.1, the Royal Commission into Age Care Quality and Safety, the submission on age care programme redesign. The report is outlined on pages eight to 10 with the recommendation on pages, on page eight with the attachments on pages 11 to 24. Do I have a mover for the resolution, please? Councillor Shaw, yep, councillor Maynard will be the second. Councillor Shaw, do you wish to speak on the item?
No.
No, you're waiving your speaking rights. Okay, with that in mind, are there any other speakers? Yes, councillor McIlhany, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to endorse the submission to the Royal Commission into Age Care. It aligns with council's mission and it serves in the best interests of our Wyndham community. But it also supports our residents to lead healthy, safe and vibrant and productive lives. We must also consider our vulnerable members of the community. The Royal Commission handed down its interim report in October 2019, and its final one will come down in November 2020. It finally states on the record that government does not have uniform quality care, and it is a significant issue. Some of the, some of the items that have been in there, that the quality of care and it's unkind to our older citizens and instances of neglect have come out in the Royal Commission. The submission is in line with our principles, which councils have adopted from Wyndham City Council's statement. And our statement says that older people in Wyndham have equitable access to a choice of aged care, supports and services when they need it. Services will encourage independence and wellness for individuals to remain at home and to be socially connected with others. Individuals will have a choice and a control of their service experience. We as a council are committed to service principles outlined in our consultation paper. Outcome-focused, agile, efficient, accessible, integrated and transparent. The submission looks at the needs of navigating the aged care system to better inform our residents, a better system to achieve council's aged care proposition, a system that is streamlined so council can recognise at-risk residents, and flexibility, flexibility of our funding model. I'd like to thank Georgie Hill, Elise Ryder, under the directorate of Alison Kenwood. This is an important document, and I can say on behalf of all councillors that we want to make sure that no elderly person falls through the gaps. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor McIlhany. Are there any other speakers for this item? Yes, councillor Marcus.
Thank you very much. I have had a very long consultation with our director, Alison, and I've been brought up to date, which I thank her very much for. I've had a very quick learning curve into aged services in the last two weeks, and I find that it doesn't meet all needs of our local people sadly. And it says here, all older Australians should have equitable access to the aged care system with consistent means testing. This is putting a lot of strain on many people with what they have to go through. For an example, my niece had to fill out 50 pages to the, to the federal government for my sister. And if that person had no one to help and support them, it would be a very big ordeal for them. So I think this is quite good, but it is failing to meet the needs of all of our aged people. And it makes me feel very sad that, you know, that they aren't all getting the same care. I went through all the services the council will still be holding for ours. And I, another wonderful thing, we had a 92-year-old lady that came to us recently who had no care, but thankfully to her neighbour. She rang the council and the council even came out on the Saturday to assist this aged care lady. So, council, well done. I'm very proud to think that we are here to support our older people. So Kelly, please pass on my thanks to your director.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Is that, have you concluded, councillor Marcus?
Sorry?
Have you concluded your?
I have.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for that, councillor Marcus. Okay, are there any other speakers on this item? There being none, we'll now proceed to a vote. All those in favour of the resolution? Against? Carrie. Item 6.3.2, Towards Equality. The report is outlined on pages 25 to 30. The recommendation is outlined on page 26 with attachments on 31 to 52. Councillor McIlhany is the mover. I've noticed councillor Maynard is the second. Councillor McIlhany, do you wish to speak on the item?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Yes, you have five minutes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The draft Towards Equity Strategy and Action Plan is for everyone. Girls, boys, women, men and gender diverse people. At its core, it is a document about human rights, fairness and equality. Whether you're a man, woman or gender diverse, gender equality will help you live your life without discrimination and access to the same opportunities. I'm particularly proud to have chaired the Subcommittee of Safer Communities, consisting of members of our community, council, including key agencies, Women's Health West, West Justice, Odyssey House and Wyndham Community Education Centre and Victoria Police, and alongside me councillor Mayor Shaw. It's timely, as I'm also undertaking further studies in justice and family violence, including having practical experience, which has made it even more aware of the importance of this document going out for public comment tonight. So the release of Towards Equity Strategy and Action Plan for the public exhibition in the city is an important one. Due to COVID-19, we've extended the usual community consultation period from one to two months. It is also timely because we're more than ever interacting with our community remotely via website and virtual means. We're getting huge hits on our website, accessing information, which I encourage all residents and all agencies to provide feedback. It will be advertised through the loop. We will encourage further organisation, organisations' feedback, and we have extended our hours on customer lines seven days a week if people haven't got access to a computer. This document has been reviewed, refreshed and better aligned to the changes in our current environment. Towards Equality is a 12-month action plan and is work undertaken over a two-year period. The document has been updated to reflect gender equality, the Gender Equality Act recently passed in February 2020 by the Victorian state government. The Gender Equality Act, a national first for Victoria, aims to improve the workplace gender equality across the Victorian public sector, universities and local councils. It also seeks better results for the Victorian community through improved policies, programmes and services. It may indate every council to have a developed four-year gender equality plan by October 2021, with the two-year progress reports to be prepared for accountability purposes. We've started this journey over two years and is part of this term, Terms of Reference Safer Communities Action Plan for 2016 and 2020. The development phase has included an extensive review of literature and evidence from the World Health Organisation, Big Health and other credible sources are referenced in the draft strategy. Community consultation has also been a key feature of the development phase. A range of community consultation and sessions have been held. A number of staff consultations have also been held. Ultimately, the report this evening is about going to the community and seeking feedback on this important issue. This document is about equity for all. It's about based, it's broad-based, it doesn't discount any one gender. I hope all colleagues will support this strategy for public consultation tonight because it's the right thing to do. We need to hear from those we represent. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor McIlhany. Are there any other speakers on the resolution? Councillor Hooper, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have a strong personal commitment to promoting equality and preventing violence against all, having been a victim of domestic violence as a child myself. I believe this new iteration is an improvement on the previous draft. However, I wish to speak against the motion on the basis I believe that it's inappropriate for councils to be attempting to consult with the community on this important strategy during the COVID-19 pandemic. I'm very concerned about the timing in putting this in the public realm. Our community are in a different headspace, worrying about their finances and jobs, balancing their family lives in this new world, worried about the bare basics just a month ago we took for granted. Trusted, clear and effective communication and consultation approaches are critical to good governance and creating plans that will truly represent the aspirations and needs of the Wyndham community. With the state government's Gender Equality Act not coming into effect until March 2021, we have time to get this right and meet our obligations. There is no need to action or rush this right now. I'm also concerned that this might distract from more higher-order consultation priorities like the need to exhibit the annual budget later this month. We have months to consult with our community of this important issue. It is not appropriate to do this now, and therefore I will be voting against this motion tonight. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Hooper. Do I have any other speakers for this resolution? Councillor Marcus, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We voted this policy down, I think a couple of years ago, but I am pleased to see that it clearly states now that the key issues towards equality for all community members, girls, boys, women and men. And that's what we were concerned about in the last policy, that it didn't seem to be fair to the male population of our city. So I'm pleased to see that's been brought in. I note that it is through the various pages that it is noted that the men will be equal to everybody else as far as domestic violence because we're seeing in the mental health field that it is that sometimes now the females are attacking the men, and so we have to make sure that everybody in our city is safe. And Wyndham is a safe and inclusive community where all people, regardless of their gender, have equal access to power, resources and opportunities and treated with dignity, respect and fairness in a life free from violence. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Marcus. Are there any other speakers that wish to speak on the resolution? Councillor Khan, yes, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to say that now this is a draft action plan going out for the community. So I look forward to see the feedback from the community. But also like to mention that this report is highlights on page 41 of 19, 150, how big differences between the part-time workers, being a male and female. So we note that on page 41 is now a great difference. I'm glad that the report have come out and we can see that now how the gender equity can be a practice in a city. So this is a great report. I look forward to see that what other community members say on this, this matter because we realise that the part-time workers are very, very, less than 100 numbers, which is a male gender, and the females are more than 500. So it's a big gap, and I love to see that what community may have to make a comment. We look forward to seeing final report. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Khan. Councillor Maynard, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll be short. I think we've wasted about six months when it was voted down last time. I don't know why. I thought it was going out for public comment. Now we're right in the middle of a pandemic and we could have had this thing underway. I most certainly will be supporting this motion, and that's about all of it, say, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Maynard. Yes, councillor McIlhany, I will get to you. Are there any other speakers before I give councillor McIlhany the right of reply? Councillor Shaw, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So yeah, I agree with, certainly for those supporting this strategy tonight, that Towards Equity Laser Foundation for councils to meet the requirements of Victorian gender equality legislation that was passed in Feb 2020. It's been discussed here this evening, it's also in the report. This legislation is focused on improving gender equality within the public sector workplaces. It aims to help close the gender pay gap, improve gender equality at all levels of the workforce, including increasing women's workforce participation and reducing sexual harassment. I must say that at this organisation, and councillor Khan touched on some of this, but for me, it's pleasing to see a number of senior executives and senior staff at this council who are female, and I hope and I know that will continue under the right leadership at this organisation. And regardless of your personal views, this strategy should go out to the community for consultation. That is the right thing to do. It really isn't up to decide or to stop people from having a say, even during difficult circumstances like the ones we are in today. I would also go as far as to say that now more than ever, we should be ensuring our lines of communication and consultation remain open. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Shaw. Are there any other speakers before I throw to councillor McIlhany? No, councillor McIlhany, you have the right of reply, therefore you have a three-minute allocation. Thank you.
I'll be quick. Firstly, I am disappointed with my colleague tonight and councillor Hooper. However, I do respect his decision. One of the things that I, I would like to say is, as I said previously, more than ever, we are communicating with our community. If there's any a time to communicate with our community, it's right now. So to stop business as usual isn't the right thing to do. And if we were to stop this tonight, do we stop every other community consultation or every other document that comes through this council in the next six months? And I don't think that will happen. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor McIlhany. We will now proceed to a vote. All those in favour of the resolution, please raise your hands. Okay, all those against? Carrie, thank you.
Mr Mayor, can I have a point of call for division?
Yes, you can, okay. Can everybody that is in favour of the resolution please raise their hands? Councillors Gibbons, Shaw, McIlhany, Villa Gonzalo, Maynard, Gilligan, Barlow, Marcus, Arn and Khan, and then those against councillor Hooper. That will be recorded for the purposes of the minutes. Thank you very much. We'll now move to item 6.4, Strategic and Town Planning. Item 6.4.1, the Wind of North Development Contributions Plan Project Implementation Programme, outlined on pages 53 to 60 with the recommendation on page 54. Do I have a mover for the resolution? Councillor Maynard, do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Barlow.
And I'd like to ask for a point of clarification on this issue too, please.
Yes, we can do that. So Athena, you want to ask a question of officers? What's the?
No, I probably just need to have clarified based on a report that came to council in the last couple of months.
Has this report come to town?
Yeah, I'm happy to support this recommendation.
Okay, can we bank that until the mover has spoken, then I'll throw to the CEO? Okay, I'll start off with that. So as the mover, councillor Maynard, do you wish to speak on the item?
I will, Mr Mayor, just very quickly. A great piece of work by officers. I think that the document itself is self-explanatory and certainly shows that this council is forward-thinking in trying to sequentially ensure that work is done in this community. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Maynard. We'll now address the question that councillor Barlow has raised. Madam CEO, are you in?
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. I too support the Wind of North Development Contributions Plan. But I just want to clarify, Mr Mayor, that at a recent portfolio meeting of Urban Futures, the chairperson of that portfolio, councillor Arn, vacated the room and vacated the chairing of the meeting because he had a conflict of interest on this very issue.
Mr Mayor, could I just seek clarification? Are you referring to councillor Khan or councillor Arn?
Khan.
Khan, thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
I'm sorry, councillor Khan. And the fact that we're going to go, we're into debate on this, I'm interested to see whether the circumstances that caused councillor Khan to vacate the chair of his portfolio and to leave the room until such time as the community and the council officers actually debated and discussed this item as to what's changed since then.
Okay, so what I would say to you councillor Barlow was, that wasn't a question of officers. It was very erring on the side of debate. It's a matter for individual councillors to determine whether they have a conflict of interest or not, whether they wish to declare it or not. You're entitled, as part of your speaking rights, to make this point. It is relevant to the document to a degree. And so I would simply say that it's the obligation of the individual to determine whether they have a conflict or not, and they should have declared it earlier in the meeting, notwithstanding the point you've made. So I think you've made your point, but as for the capacity for me as the chair to rule on it, I'm limited in what I can do. So with that in mind, I will now give you the duration of your speaking rights, if you wish to exercise them for the period of two minutes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for your ruling. Look, I fully support this development. We're very, very close to the boundary of the city of Wyndham in the northern area. And in fact, there are quite a number of, in this particular area, there's quite a number of developers and community people who own land still, who are residents, who still own land up in this area. So they are very keen, I believe, to see what, what occurs up in, around there. And it's very interesting that, it's very important that the contributions that are made by the developers and that in the new areas that are opening up actually assist this council to provide the open space and the services that's much needed in new areas, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Barlow. Are there any other speakers on the resolution as it stands? Councillor Khan, you have a period of, sorry, you have a time allocation of three minutes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I'd like to put a notice now, the fellow councillor, Henry Barlow, have asked the questions, and I would like to say in more in detail, that the timing and content of the meeting is different to what we're debating here today. Just for your clarification, I would declare that I'm resident of that DCP, and I would have as equal right as anybody else. It considers as a part of the, member of the organisation, so big in scale. So I take the responsibility in saying that, you know, I'm glad that, I'm voting for this one, supporting this because it addresses what is needed to be in the area. Now, I'm glad that Wyndham City Council is a council, a progressive council, who knows what needs to be done for the area, and I'm glad that I'm part of all of you who are making decisions today to support this, this programme. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Khan. Are there any other speakers on the resolution? No, there being none, we'll now proceed to a vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Against? Carrie, thank you. We'll now move to item 6.4.2, the Windham West Development Contributions Plan Project Implementation Programme. The report is outlined on pages 61 to 71 with the recommendation on page 62. Do I have a mover for the item? Councillor Barlow, do I have a second? Councillor Khan, councillor Barlow, do you wish to speak on the item?
I think my comments from the previous item would probably cover this item in the west as well.
Sure, thank you very much, councillor Barlow. Are there any other speakers on the item? Councillor Khan, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, it's another, good work the council's trying to do. Now, DCPs obviously, that those developers are in active in the area, and it's important now they, they contribute to the council their fair share. What is the council applied as a part of the development? I also must declare that I have no affiliations or anything in this area, just for the point of record. But can I say, isn't it great? The council is ahead of the plan and thinking what needs to be done. And the DCP is important when you plan a financial of any organisation. So I'm glad that I'll be part of all of you who support this programme, and I look forward to see that once this get done.
Thank you very much, councillor Khan. Do I have any other speakers for the item? Councillor Shaw, you have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I will be supporting this, but again, I've actually raised this at briefings previously. I see it's still actually in the report around our, the work that needs to be done, that's classified under state infrastructure. It's actually on page 67 of this OCM report, that it needs to be funded and constructed by the state government at a cost which could approach 80 to 100 million. The council's commitment to constructing the Phase One and Two projects as a central platform of Windham West lends to the advocacy, I think in the current environment, we've been trying to advocate for this for a little while now. We're not getting a lot of traction in terms of getting funding from the state government on this. I understand why that is. This is a huge funding request that we are asking for. It is not something that we can fund, obviously through our own DCPs etcetera as such. So, you know, it is time, I think, as a council, we come back and look at this and make some priorities in terms of what are going to be our priority asks, especially when the state government does strike a budget. In particular with this one, I think we need to start making some decisions on how we're going to move this forward. Otherwise, we're going to be at a stalemate, I think, at this point. Considering what is happening across Australia, across the world in terms of federal government stimulus package, state government stimulus packages, and the amount of money that they're going to actually have to start funding these, I think it's time we really went back and started doing that. And whilst I support overall what we're trying to do here, this is actually a critical component of the Windham West Link, and I think it's something we need to go back and really think through how we're going to actually resolve this impasse because I do not believe that we will get 80 to 100 million dollars for this. It's time to relook at it. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Shaw. Do I have any other speakers on the item? Councillor Maynard, you have three minutes. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, the Windham West DCPs, there's been comment made in the chamber that developers contribute to this in an adequate way. I certainly disagree. I think that the state government needs to look at the percentage that they set down that developers contribute to the infrastructure in this community and other communities. And I certainly support, as other councillor colleagues will, I hope, about the way in which we move forward in supporting the Windham West DCP programme. Of course, of critical importance is the Armstrong-Ison Road Bridge. And as councillor Shaw has mentioned, you know, it's somewhere between 80 and 100 million dollars. The fact of the matter is, is that Ison Road is currently being constructed by the developer, lend lease to Harple Estate, and within six months, the connection to Bullman Road will be open. So the only part that's missing thus far from that is the bridge. And the other part on the southern side of the Geelong Rail Corridor that council will be responsible for constructing once there's been sign-off on drainage from City West Water or Melbourne Water, and we can then move on and get that done. I certainly look forward to it. I certainly look forward to that happening, as I do with the Hobbs Road connection over the Werribee River to Davis and Sayers Road. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Maynard. Are there any other speakers on the item? There being none, we'll now proceed to a vote. All those in favour of the resolution? Thank you. All those against, carried. Item 6.5, other reports, item 6.5.1, the Sports Facility Capital Development Guide, 2020 to 2025. The report is outlined on pages 72 to 75 with the recommendation on page 72 and the attachments from 76 to 110. Do I have a mover? Councillor Maynard, do I have a second for the item? Councillor Khan. Councillor Maynard, do you wish to speak on the item?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, you have five minutes.
Mr. Mayor, removing this motion, I want to highlight the fundamental and extremely important changes to this policy. I've previously spoken on this policy when it went out for public consultation, but I'd like to highlight two specific sections of the document that have certainly had a watershed moment for the sporting community. And they are, Mr. Mayor, the multi-use sharing of pavilion where has been updated to provide a larger community space within pavilions where multiple sporting user groups are located, have overlapping seasons of usage, so you may have two winter sports at the same pavilion, and utilise this facility at the same time, so there is the opportunity for increased social space. The other item that is certainly worth highlighting is the change to the flood lighting, or the lighting of grounds as provided. And that has been updated, and I thank my councillor colleagues in supporting this. This has been updated to allow for lighting of unlit sports playing surfaces to be considered on a case-by-case basis, following council assessment against a set criteria to determine eligibility. The assessment criteria includes alignment with council objectives, participation and use, and value for money and broader community. And I think, Mr. Mayor, that is a fundamental shift in what the policy has provided previously. I'd also like to just highlight that these important changes, along with the Sports Facility User Guide, which has recently been adopted, which now allows clubs to sublet part of their pavilion to other businesses or organisations, subject to council approval, of course, are going to greatly improve the viability and sustainability of clubs to generate much-needed additional funds, something that has been lacking in policy for a very long time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Maynard. I certainly want to put on the record my personal thanks for the work that you've done in relation to this item. Are there any other speakers that wish to speak? Yes, councillor Marcus.
Thank you. I'm not against this policy. I think the council officers have done a really good job, but there is, it's very disturbing to read that 55% of adults residing in our city fail to meet physical sporting activities. One in five do not participate in sport, and I find that quite disturbing. Now, I was a guest speaker down at Point Cook recently for our senior people, and I've got a whole list of things that they want. They said, "There is nothing for us in Point Cook ever, nothing. We've got about two bowling greens, that's all we've got. Why can we not have crokey lawns? Why can we not have dancing?" Now, I think you will all be well aware that for years and years and years and more years, I have asked for dancing for our city. I'm really disappointed to see there is absolutely nothing in this policy for our older people who love to dance and they have to leave this city and go to Eltona. The competitive dancers from this city have to go to Melbourne, eastern suburbs or Pasco Vale. So, really and truly, I've just, I've asked for a long time and it's always fell on deaf ears, but I will continue to advocate for our senior people and to get dancing recognised in this city as a sport. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Marcus. Are there any other speakers for this item? Councillor Shaw, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't need that long. Just a couple of things. It's great to see that this has been, actually, this development guide is being looked at. My only, I'll be supporting it. My only comment is, and I think it's something the executive team here and council officers need to think about, is that a five-year period for these sorts of policies, I think, is quite long. I think our community grows quite rapidly, and in terms of the infrastructure and the build that we need, I think we have found this term of council that the previous policy has caused not so much issues as such, but we can clearly see that, which is why larger community space is being looked at, that those things get outdated really quickly, especially when we're asking community sporting, community groups and sporting groups, you know, to share and co-locate. And whilst I support that overall, we need to make sure that we're future-fitting our developments in this space. And I think having a five-year policy period doesn't actually lend itself to be agile in terms of some of our decision-making and things that we need to do. So, I think more broadly, that's something that we should be looking at. But overall, I think this is actually a good document. My only other concern, I suppose, as an Irremu Ward councillor, is in Irremu Ward and probably in some of the other wards, that we have some older areas that we have large sporting groups and possibly even some community groups that use facilities that are very old, that have been built a long time, that we keep getting told to still have a particular shelf life. And I want to understand how we're going to retrofit some of those community spaces and give them actually what they need to actually support our growing communities, because as we know, many of our sporting clubs and community groups do an excellent job in our communities, from sport, keeping people physically active. And we know that has a whole range of benefits for our community more broadly. So, that's something I'll be taking forward as we move into our last little while on council and making sure that those groups and those pavilions are actually coming to the top of the list to be retrofitted. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Shaw. Are there any other speakers for the item? Yes, councillor Barlow, three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I agree with the sentiments. It's great that we've actually got a guide for this. And maybe in his reply, councillor Maynard may mention a figure that he's used that many times, where I've heard him speak about how many hundreds of millions of dollars will be required over a period of time in actually trying to catch up with the demand of sport and what it is. So, I thought I'd just leave that there. But he's obviously been a very great advocate of this, and I know in some of the sporting bodies that I go around to over the period of time, then they do quite speak quite highly of councillor Maynard in that he may not give them exactly what, he may not give them what they want, but at least they get at his ear in what their requirements are. So, maybe in his reply, he could mention that amount of money, which actually is mind-boggling, I must admit.
Thank you very much, councillor Barlow. Are there any other speakers on this item? Councillor Khan, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I would like to say that I may agree with my fellow councillor, councillor Mayor Shaw, says that the draft was sent out for 2020 to 25, and I'm sure that now, since the COVID-19, things won't be the same, though it would be good to see that if there's a, in future, maybe a review again, but we'll see how we go. I'm glad that now that it went out on OCM on 3rd of December, we approved the draft and went out for the public education, now we're approving. It's been now for the final approval. Now, there was 19 people applied, 19 people responded, and they obviously have said that, that they need a multi-user facility. I'm glad the department entire, the officers and council portfolio, council people may not have worked hard. And good to see that now we're going to use the, such as multi-use sharing of pavilions, just not for the one time, it will be winter, summer, and the common sense has been applied, so we can maximise a use of the facilities across the several sports, such as tennis courts, synthetic soccer field, sports full of lighting in community areas. I'll be look forward to supporting this one and see how the community will be utilising the facilities now we have, and we've got a guide for them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Khan. Any other speakers before I revert back to councillor Maynard? No, there being none, I will enable a write-off reply if you wish to exercise it, councillor Maynard, for a period of three minutes.
I certainly will, Mr. Mayor, even just to satisfy councillor Barlow. It certainly is a considerable amount of money, and when the sports strategy was passed, it did project an anticipated spend of approximately 970 million dollars to provide facilities for sporting, for the sporting environment over the next 27 years. So, it certainly is a considerable amount of investment. And approximately half of that will come from council, the rest will be, you know, government grants and et cetera. But certainly, I do take on board that there are a number of facilities in this municipality that need retrofitting. And certainly, this council in the last, this term has spent somewhere in the vicinity of 10 million dollars retrofitting some of the buildings that were a lot newer, but had insufficient social space. And I certainly look forward to the facilities that have, I suppose, a limited shelf life and use being retrofitted as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Maynard. We will now proceed to a vote. All those in favour of the resolution? All those against, carried. We're moving to item 6.5.2, the Small Business Entrepreneurship and Innovation Fund. The report is outlined on pages 111 to 116 with the recommendation on page 112 and attachments on 117 to 123. Do I have a mover for the item? Councillor Villa Gonzalo, councillor Arne is the second, councillor Villa Gonzalo, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support the recommendation of this motion and encourage my fellow councillors to support it. When I stood for council in 2016 and four elections before that, my advocacy then, as it continues today, are getting more council support for our growing migrant community, getting more of our residents to become more active citizens, supporting the start-up businesses and growing a culture of innovation and entrepreneurship in our city. I am very happy to say that this council believes in the same vision and supports the same objectives as I have in those areas. This council has delivered programmes which engage and encourage and support our migrant population. Our community engagement programme is outstanding, and more of our residents are now more involved and active. We have now a social procurement policy, a social and economic inclusion policy, a responsive and future-focused economic growth strategy, and a trend-setting innovation festival programme, and a co-working and innovation hub programme. We have also implemented programmes to support our start-ups, like the enterprising Wyndham and the ongoing and successful Innovate to Accelerate programmes. Tonight, we have before us this Small Business Entrepreneurship and Innovation Fund. This fund will provide a platform for our local small businesses at all stages of growth, including the start-up phase, to be offered a level of financial support to meet specific needs to grow and therefore create local jobs. This fund was conceptualised and developed by the Future Focused Economy Portfolio and Economic Growth Unit of council as part of our economic growth strategy. We want Wyndham to be recognised as a great place to start business and a place that values innovation, entrepreneurship and collaboration. This fund will be an annual allocation beginning budget year 2020-2021. This fund was conceptualised in 2017, and only tonight has reached this point for council to pass and establish. Last March 23, council established the Win Local Economic Support Package, which included a small business grant programme as part of council's response to COVID-19 crisis. That grant is part of a $5 million that we allocated for the support package in order to help ensure the sustainability of our local businesses. This is council's response to hopefully a short-term problem. The fund I am hoping we will establish tonight with the support of my fellow councillors is a separate funding programme and has long-term economic growth objectives. I look forward to seeing both the fund and the grant implemented. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well said. Thank you very much, councillor Villa Gonzalo. Are there any other speakers? Yes, councillor Arne, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Small Business Innovation and Entrepreneurship Fund is a significant investment by council, further emphasising our focus on building a diverse and strong knowledge economy. The programme has been designed to focus on two groups. Wyndham residents seeking to start new enterprises that are characterised by innovation and new ways of thinking. Existing businesses that have new and innovative ideas to grow their existing businesses and to adopt the changing economy. The programme has been designed to enable innovation and entrepreneurship capacity in Wyndham City. It will play an important role in the ongoing development and growth of the city's small business and startup ecosystem, as businesses will need to adopt to new ways of doing businesses as never before, during and after this pandemic. I'm always passionate about how we can work smarter and support small innovative businesses and entrepreneurs. We have been working hard for something like this since the start of this term, and I'm so pleased and proud to see this programme is finally in front of us tonight. If this is passed tonight and with the programme in place, it will help Wyndham to become a destination for innovative businesses. And I congratulate everyone involved in this work, especially councillor Villa Gonzalo and the economic development team. Well done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor. Are there any other speakers? Yes, councillor Shaw, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't need that, I don't think. But first of all, we'll be supporting this. I think this is a very good outcome in terms of, you know, the work that we've been discussing at council. But I just wanted to take the opportunity to personally thank councillor Villa Gonzalo for the work that you've done to championship, not just this fund, but I suppose the principles that support this fund. It's been an advocacy for you since you came onto council. But probably, like all of us, we've found sometimes our advocacy can be a long road. But here we are tonight, and I dare say probably will be endorsed certainly by the majority of councillors. So, congratulations to you and your advocacy in getting this far. And I'm looking forward to seeing this actually come to fruition and actually be implemented. So, well done. Thank you. I support it, Mr. Mayor.
Well said. Thanks, councillor Shaw. Yes, councillor Marcus, three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, having been a businessperson all my life, since I came to this city, I think this is absolutely fantastic. I have gone through it in fine detail, and I like what I see. This is very timely, because every single day for the last three months, I've had businesses coming to me, telling me they're up to 80% down, and they don't see that they will ever, ever be able to come back. It is absolutely devastating to have to sit into my office and listen to these poor business people. So, I hope that with our other package, that council can and will look at how we can support them. I think Daryl and his team have done a really, a good thing, and it's excellent to see that it is a competitive fund with a stream one and stream two. And I also am very pleased to see that they have very strict guidelines on how all the people, or the business people, will be able to apply for these funds. And that is most important, and especially with the federal and the state government putting their packages through too. So, well done to everyone, but unfortunately, this will be very difficult. I do hope that we perhaps delay it slightly into the next financial year till we see exactly how all of our business people will be able to cope. And I would perhaps like to see it deferred till December before we are handing out any money. Because once we get through this pandemic, that is when probably everyone will need the funds to help them and support them in their business life. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Marcus. Can I just clarify, you're speaking for the item? Is that right?
Sorry?
So, you're speaking in favour of the resolution, yes, in your comments?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, councillor McIlhane, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I understand that the programme was developed prior to COVID-19, I'm very pleased that the report references COVID-19, that this fund is not part of the Win Local Support Programme that council endorsed at the special meeting of council a few weeks ago. The economic impacts of COVID-19 are well documented. But despite this, we're seeing many of our local businesses adapting to new ways of doing business. Every day, I'm seeing businesses Every day, I'm seeing businesses not prepared to show defeat, but how we can continue and change our offerings, and I commend them accordingly. As we emerge from COVID nineteen, make no mistake, enabling innovation will be more critical than ever before. The business innovation and entrepreneurship will play a key role in responding to the challenges post-COVID nineteen economy in Wyndham now and in the future. And coincidentally, I think it's very evident today from an article in The Age, virus will leave an economic impact for decades. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Council McIlhany. Are there any, yes, Council Hooper, three minutes.
You're just going to hit yourself in the face with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm going to be the only one speaking against this motion. Look, I'm very supportive of business innovation and entrepreneurship, and I do speak against this while commending and acknowledging the work that Council Villa Gonzalo and the Future Focus Portfolio Committee have done. Under different circumstances, I would wholeheartedly support this. But the impact of COVID nineteen and the measures that we need to make or undertake in this city with our partners, partners, business and state government to reduce the impact on local jobs, national and international markets, we, it's just very, very unclear. In my view, we should not be pursuing this programme right now, because there is a significant risk that it is untargeted, and given how up in the air the economy is, it could ultimately be a waste of ratepayers' money. And that would be the wrong action, an unfair legacy for the laudable concepts in this motion, and something that should not be taken personally. Walter, I'm not, it's just, everything is so up in the air. This is a programme for another time. We need to be agile to support our business community, of course, but fiscal responsibility should be paramount. It is unclear to me as to how this programme, under this new world that we're in, will be able to have a measurable impact on the issues facing small business sector. We should, and I know we are doing this as a council, be reviewing all services and programmes to ensure they are relevant and targeted in this new economy. We should also better understand what the state government response package will be for all small businesses, as this could be a recipe for duplication. We should be focused in the interim on what support is available for small business to manage impacts, particularly from state government and federal government, as well as our own that we passed just a couple of weeks ago. There's relief packages that we know for small business grants, loans, resilient services, and other industry supports, psychological supports. We need to know the full mix of what is happening before we go forward with this programme. If it was any other time, man, I'd be behind it, nine hundred percent. Just right now, with the uncertainty, I just can't be. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council Hooper. Are there any other speakers before I throw back to Council Villa Gonzalo? Oh, yes, Council Barlow, three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I must say that when people deserve a pat on the back, you should give it to them. And Walter, I can remember our first meeting when we got on council, and I had the one-on-ones. And then I asked you what it was that you wanted to achieve in your term on council, and this one was right at the top of your list. And things are worth waiting for good things to happen. Took me three and a half years to get the athletics track at Popper's Lane built, but it was worth it. And I think you've done the same here. I differ a little bit, and I think in that, out of diversity comes opportunity. And I think that there's an opportunity here where people will look at different ways of doing business, and they probably just need a hand to do that. And I think that this proposal that we're going to be voting on, this motion that we're going to be voting on at the moment, to allocate the two hundred thousand dollars and get it started, I think we should just take it for what it is and just do it. I don't believe in waiting, 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 because sometimes, as I said, diversity creates opportunity. And I think there's a lot of businesses that are going to come out of the situation that we're in, not only in Wyndham, but in Victoria, Australia, and in other parts of the world, where businesses will actually find a different way of doing business. And I think that you can sit and complain about it, or you can look at ways of actually creating employment, creating a different way of doing. I think some businesses will close, but that doesn't mean to say that they will stop trading. Their shop fronts might close, but the trading won't. And I think that it's important that, in this particular case, and we've worked really hard on this, is that we should be looking at, if it's a viable option, then we should be putting some funding towards it. So I would say keep punching Council of Villa Gonzalo, and make sure that we're actually starting to spend the money, because don't worry about people catching a virus. It's about what's going to come after that that's important.
Great. Thank you very much, Council Barlow. Council Villa Gonzalo, unless, oh, yes, Council Khan, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, can I say that now, two thousand and twelve, I got first elected, and I used to hold a portfolio of economic development. And I've spoken a number of times to the CEO, and he always said that, yes, this is something in my agenda, and times come and we'll do it. I like to say that now, it's my pleasure today to be part of this motion, because this is not the first council who is doing this work. It's done by Melbourne City Council, done by Dandong Council, and some other councils, Sunshine Council. This is something good we're doing, we could have done before, but never be late. And also, a message, a great message one time is COVID nineteen. We are telling people we are fighting it, we do not scare about that two hundred thousand dollars. Two hundred thousand dollars, it's a great city of Wyndham, it's peanuts. Now, I'm glad that it's only two hundred thousand dollars, could be more, but I could not say that now, it's all depends after the future programmes. And I know that now cuffing and all these things, we're going to fight together in this COVID environment, and the financial two hundred thousand dollars will not make a big difference. This fund will help someone who might have a depression, or might thinking the life is end, because everywhere, we see everyday newspapers, the bad news, economy go down, we're going to face 10 down, this will happen, that will happen. Wyndham City Council are giving a hope. Come to us, two hundred thousand dollars is a grant, you've got innovative idea, innovative idea, we're going to support you, we'll get your back. So I'm sure that those who are listening, they could not be here today because of that COVID nineteen, we're doing Facebook Live telecast. You can have a confidence, this council, a business, progressive council, I'm glad that I'm part of your team. So well done, Walter, to you and your entire department, including officers, I'll be supporting it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council Khan. Council Villa Gonzalo, do you wish to exercise the right of reply for three minutes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank those who expressed support and also understand the objections that were raised. But now is exactly why we need this fund. Unprecedented times require unprecedented solutions, and things like this is something that we need to come up with, so that the businesses that we have would be encouraged, would be inspired, other businesses would be inspired to do something. COVID nineteen is not going to be there forever, it's going to end. And when we recover from this, when this problem ends, then that's the time we need to have our businesses do something to recover and to encourage other businesses to do more, so that we can create local jobs in this city. So this fund is very important, and now is the time that we pass it. It's been two thousand and seventeen, from the start of this term, of this council term, we started talking about it, and a lot of our councillor colleagues have already expressed their interest in putting more money to the economic development, right? We expressed that before several times, that we say, we want to give more funding to the economic development, we're not putting enough. Now is the time to put our money where our mouth is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Here, here. All right, we'll now put that to a vote. All those in favour?
Walter, you actually changed my view.
Okay, against? Against? Anyone against? No? There you go, unanimous. Well done, Walter. Thank you. We'll move on to the next item now, six point five point three, the Assembly of Councillors. So the report is on page one, two, four, the recommendation is on the same page, and the attachments from one twenty-five to one thirty. Do I have a mover? Council Manard, Council Gibbons is the second act, do you wish to speak to the item? Council Manard?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Suffice to say that I did look, but unfortunately, it doesn't, it doesn't show the time of when people come and when they leave, which is unfortunate. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much for that contribution, Council Manard. Are there any other speakers? Council McIlhany?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Page one twenty-seven, under Urban Futures, it says there's no conflict declared, but the delegates' report does say there is a conflict declared, so I think there's just an administrative error there, unless the form hasn't been completed.
So, Madam CEO, do you want to refer this to governance for clarification?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe we have that advice on hand at the moment. I'm happy to throw to Celia if Celia is able to respond, but, Mr. Mayor, could I just clarify exactly what you're referring to? So the item?
Under Urban Futures, we have the Assembly. It says councillors' attendance, officers' attendance, matters raised. And under matters raised, on that particular meeting, Wyndham North Development contributions, Council Khan declared a conflict yet. On the register, it says there was no conflicts, no conflicts of interest.
Disclosed. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'd need to take that under advisement by officers, not able to be resolved here, but just note that and seek clarification. I actually think it refers to the matter that you ruled upon earlier. So I think that's something that we just need to be mindful of, we'll note that, and certainly governance will follow up with the councillor concerned, seek clarification.
Excellent, thank you. I believe that will now satisfy your point, Council McIlhany? Yes, thank you. Okay, are there any other speakers on the item before I proceed to a vote? No? Okay, so just to clarify, the resolution as it stands is that council note the record of the Assembly of Councillors, and note to review page one, two, seven, conflict of interest disclosure in relation to Urban Futures Portfolio Committee meeting. That is the substantive resolution as it stands. And is that okay for you, Council Manard, to be supportive of that as the mover? Given that Council McIlhany's noted that, Council McIlhany has seconded that. Are there anyone against that resolution? No? Okay, we'll now proceed to a vote then. All those in favour? Against? Carried. Item seven, notice of motion. Item seven point one, notice of motion five eighty-five. Councilor Khan, you have five minutes. Do you wish to read out your resolution, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Take the nod that council meeting to be held on seventh of, seventh of April twenty twenty, it is my intention to move the following motion. The council adopt and allow a ten percent fee waiver on upcoming council, which is today, on each property across the Wyndham City Council area. Now, rational behind this, Mr. Mayor?
Manard, before you do that, can I get a seconder for the item? I just wanted you to explain the notice of motion. Yes, you've got a seconder. Council Villa Gonzalo, you can now proceed, you have a period of five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dear councillors, members of the public on Facebook Live, we are living in unprecedented times. The future is uncertain, and no one knows when things will return back to normal. Wyndham City Council residents are no different to other Australians whom have been affected by the devastating spread of the COVID nineteen. The Wyndham City Council is one of the fastest-growing council in the country, that provides affordable living and housing and work opportunities to many Australians. The new migrants have moved to the area, just to name a few suburbs, such as Lakitanet, Point Cook, Williams Landing, Truganaina, and Wyndham Well, and men alike. The residents of these suburbs are often young families with financial commitments, such as housing, mortgage, car insurance, housing insurance, and household goods, and motor vehicles often purchased on credit repayment instalments. Some of them are running their own businesses, and their businesses are greatly affected by almost lost. Many residents work full-time, part-time, casual, and the work has been greatly reduced. This means that their income to support their families also have been greatly reduced or are lost completely. I'm sure we all agree with this assessment. The fact this had on the local community at Wyndham City Council has been significant to such extent, many residents cannot afford the significant unprecedented financial commitments, including the payments for mortgage, financial repayments, electricity bills, gas bills, water bill, and their children's education expenses, which may be affected. Due to the lockdown and result of COVID nineteen, additional increased expenses have been incurred. Council rate for commercial tenants leasing real estate to operate business in Wyndham City Council area are often directly to responsibility to the commercial tenant, which means that small businesses are directly affected and required our support in such a difficult time. The reduction of council rate have been directly affected on operational costs of the small businesses operating in Wyndham City Council area, while the federal government and state government is providing some benefits. Relief is not enough to cover the reality of the household expenses and allied services for the families to cover day to day life. The world have been changed since COVID nineteen pandemic. Therefore, the ten percent reduction of current rate, I say again, the world have been changed since the COVID nineteen pandemic, therefore the ten percent reduction of the current rate is entirely appropriate and expected by the majority of the residents of Wyndham City Council area, where some have been requested a waiver at between twenty-five to fifty percent of the current council rate of their residential properties that they call their Aussie dream homes. Arguments such as deferred payment for council rates without interest will not take away the real pain, Mr. Mayor, and any stress of the ratepayers. It sounds sweet and attractive for the defer of the rates, but is not good enough to take away of their real hardship and pain. Many council have reduced their services and have made reductions in their expenses to manage their expenses because life has been changed after COVID nineteen, we all agree with that. No argument will be valid and sensible that services need to be cut. We need to put people first and consider their real and actual hardship.
You have a minute remaining.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be quick. At the very least, we can offer, at the very least, we can offer a ten percent reduction of the current council rates for the entire year, to let residents know that we are all in together, and that means we are in fact with them. I would like to humbly request my mayor, Council Josh Gulligan, deputy mayor, Council John Gibbons, and other fellow councillors, to ignore political differences and to unite to the hardship faced by the resident of Wyndham, city council, and appreciate and understand that we all have been elected to represent the resident of city of Wyndham and to make decisions for their well-being. Further, I would like to highlight this chamber tonight as part of the core values of Wyndham City Council, a resident on the agenda, under the section titled Values, which states the community focus has been a part of its key values to work for the interests of the community, engage, listen, and consult with the stakeholders, and value the community, and further emphasis leadership as a core values to provide the leadership to the community-wide effective teamwork, in particularly at such unprecedented moment. The community has elected us to listen to their concern in the moment like this.
Has elapsed. Okay.
Mr., I'll be quick now. The progress of the-
One more. It's one more sentence, that's it. Otherwise-
COVID nineteen, I will continue to say, fellow councillor, do your support to support this, a ten percent actions in the entire year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council Khan, for that contribution. All right, Council McIlhany, you did raise your hand, so I will throw to you first. Are you speaking for or against the resolution?
I'll be speaking against the resolution. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look- Look, I must admit, I'm a little bit disappointed that that notice of motion's even come to this chamber tonight. This notice of motion has had little discussion, in fact, no discussion, and certainly no financially, financial modelling to support a 10% reduction in rates. This council, more than ever, acknowledges COVID-19 situation, and yes, it is affecting every, everybody in our community. In fact, it's affecting the world as we know. I think we need to put a few things into perspective here. This council, headed by our CEO, Kelly Grigsby, and our executive, were on the forefront of this pandemic well before most of the 79 councils. That's why we closed our civic centre doors almost three weeks ago and were working remotely. Nearly 1,500 staff working remotely. This is because this council invested significant funds in a transformation project that allowed us to immediately respond when we knew the full extent of COVID-19. That's why we have customer service operating seven days a week currently. We are providing library virtual programmes, we're providing youth initiatives, we're looking, we're already looking well ahead of what's going to possibly happen here, and I hope it doesn't. That is why we immediately were on the forefront at a special council meeting allocating $5 million stimulus package to be used to assist our local businesses and residents, of which, if I recall councillor Khan, you passed. These programmes will come to fruition when we know exactly what the state and federal government initiatives mean to this community, and then those gaps will be worked on for the best possible outcomes. We also acknowledge those residents that have hard, financial hardships and are doing it tough, and we, we have hardship provisions to assist those residents and they can ring seven days a week. As outlined above, we're already providing support with economic support stimulus package and other measures, which is outside business as usual, and we continue to daily to monitor the actions and ways to help this community. I know for a fact the executive meet every day at nine o'clock and at 12, if I'm correct, Kelly.
Councillor McIlhany, you have 30 seconds.
To work out the next stage. Only yesterday, the Minister of Local Government, Adam Somirak, is calling on councils to protect their communities and redouble efforts to assist their community at this time and above all, not add to the number of Victorians who will lose their jobs. Now, if we're to have a 10% reduction, it's going to be on, there's going to be severe cuts, and that's capital programs as well as staff. And this is the media release, I don't know if everybody's read it.
Okay.
To support... I just want to finish quickly.
You'll be winding up, yes.
To support an impulsive, and it is an impulsive, notice of motion would be totally irresponsible of this council. I've sat on this audit and risk committee on and off for 10 years, and it would be absolutely detrimental to the long-term sustainability if we go with councillor Khan's notice of motion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor McIlhany. Councillor Maynard, you had your hand up, you have 30...
13 minutes.
Three minutes.
I'll take the 13. Thank you, Mr Mayor. I certainly won't be supporting this notice of motion. This council, as councillor McIlhany has certainly alluded to, has put in place certain steps that will alleviate the hardship that residents will face. And let's not forget, we are also residents as well in this community, and we have to pay our rates, just like anyone else. The issue that I have is that this happens to be an election year. This is an ill-conceived and unwarranted notice of motion that has no sustainability for this council whatsoever. I have to say that giving a 10% cut in rates to residents, so councillor Khan, hopefully in your right of reply, you'll explain to me where you're going to cut $21 million from this council's budget, because that's what 10% relates to. And you tell me where we're going to start cutting people, when, when, what we should be doing is supporting them. We are giving them the opportunity to defer their rates, we are not going to be implementing fines or interest on the unpaid rates. So I think it's nothing but a vote grab. Thank you, councillor, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Maynard. Are there any other speakers? Yes councillor Hooper, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Playing the part of Dr No tonight. Rates form 70% of council's income. It's used for such things as maternal and child health, sorry, I stole this from you, councillor Shaw, immunisation, aged care, rubbish collection, customer service. Which of those things are going to be cut? Or is it funding for Point Cook Road Sneets Road? The lights there that are so desperately needed? Are the lights going in at Dunning's and Lennon? Or the community facilities at Tarnet? COVID-19 is hitting many hard, many businesses too, which is why we passed in the car park meeting the $5 million support package. In case you missed reading about it, there were three components of that Win Local Economic Support Package, 1.5 million small business grants programme, deferred council rates for businesses that fall within certain categories to benefit those businesses most in need. There'll be no interest charged for the, or no interest charged for that relief for six months, applied from February 2020 for rates that are outstanding for the 2019-2020 financial year, and that that will be reviewed in a six-month period. Economic strengthening and community development will also include relief for households, for dog registration, and other fees. We aim to work with the community and business to keep local jobs. It's worth pointing out, as councillor Maynard said, that there's no referrals will be made to debt collection for six months, and the council's hardship policy will certainly be reviewed to extend across more people so that the rate payer base has got more support. Wyndham is home to 17,000 businesses, 68% are either home-based or have no staff, 30% employ 1 to 19 people and 2% employ 20 or more. 25% of Melbourne's Western Metropolitan businesses are here in Wyndham. Business is a vital part of our economy, a major source of local jobs. The time of uncertainty is going to challenge many. The magnitude of the economic downturn, and more specifically the loss of employment, the loss of household income, will significantly impact the social fabric of our community. In this regard, any support the council can provide beyond programmes offered by state and federal government is paramount, and we are doing that with Win Local. We would not be able to do that with a 10% reduction. Psychological help, youth help, all those services are going to be so desperately needed in this community when people lose their jobs and are crying out for support. If we do not have the economic capacity to deliver it, we will not be able to deliver it. Antics and suspect politics surrounding our rates certainly won't facilitate any of that. This is nothing more than grandstanding at best and outright manipulation at worst. It is an act that does not address the needs of our community.
30 seconds councillor Hooper.
As right now, we do not know what the impacts are, which is why I've been so hesitant to support things tonight. We don't know what the government response will be when it helps businesses. We don't know what the public's respective needs will be when they lose jobs and actually cry out for, for support or, you know, with psychological or domestic violence issues. There's going to be a range of things that we just don't know are going to happen.
Your time's elapsed.
One last sentence.
Yes.
I can't express how disgusted I am at the rank data politics, I just hope people see it for what it is. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much for your contribution councillor Hooper. Councillor Gibbons, you have three minutes.
I'd like to support councillor McIlhany and the other councillors who oppose this. I just can't see how we can get away with it. There's no figures down, you can't even put it to, put it to a vote. I mean, it's a crazy, it's a crazy motion, and I oppose it.
Thank you very much councillor Gibbons, short, sharp and precise, that one. Thanks for that. Oh yes, councillor Ballot.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. A lot of my thunder's been stolen already, but obviously great minds think alike. Councillor Khan, I sent you an email on Tuesday, the 31st of March, very asking, back then, over a week ago, the very questions that have been asked tonight. And I'll read out two sentences out of my email which you didn't bother to reply. You need to be very transparent where the cuts will be, otherwise this just looks like blatant electioneering with a council election coming up. The community is not stupid, they will need to know what services or infrastructure projects you want to see cut. You will need to be held accountable to affected residents and businesses and staff who may lose their job if this motion gets passed. It's very easy to have a look at saying people are going to be better off, but let me talk facts. My rates would give me, if you took 10% off my rate, I would get an extra $2.80 a week, not even enough to buy a cup of coffee. If, and that's because my rates being the townhouse is only $1,500. If you were paying $2,000 a year on your rates, you would be spent, you would be saving $200, which equates to $4 of it. Again, not enough to buy a cup of coffee, let alone what you said, people have got to pay their kids' school fees, they've got to do this, they've got to do that. Even if you were paying $10,000 for rates, you would be saving $1,000. $1,000 split over a year doesn't go very far, no matter what you want to spend it on. My $150 a year wouldn't even buy me one week's groceries. However, there are 28% of residences in Wyndham are rentals, so somebody else owns them. So I've got friends, and I'm not going to mention their names because we're on the public record, who own three and four and five properties. Now, if you give them a 10% rate decrease, it's not going to go to the poor old mum and dad that's renting their unit or their house, it's going to go into their pocket. Going to go into their pocket. So, to be honest, it'd be great to give people a 10% one-off rate cut, but it's not going to achieve anything because this council, like most other councils, have put into place a system which has been spoken about tonight, that we spent about 10 minutes at in the wind out there in the car park.
30 seconds.
And talking about the things that we're going to help do for people. Now, I've got nothing else to say. I'm, look, I'm just, I'm absolutely in, I came onto council in 1997, and this would have to be the worst notice of motion I've ever heard in my life, let me tell you. And I've heard some brilliant ones over the years, but this one probably, you know, it looks as if it comes out of a Monty Python sketch.
Thank you very much councillor Ballot for that contribution. Are there any other councillors? Yes councillor Arne, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Miss Mayor. I think we all realise this is an extremely difficult time, and we will always help those who are in genuine hardship. As my fellow councillors mentioned, that rates form a significant part of our income, and those are used to provide essential services, and we have extended these essential services to make sure that we are there for the community that in need. The current crisis will have lasting impacts, and as the elected community representative, we must make sure that we still have the capacity to access our community as needs evolve. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Arne. Councillor Marcus, yes.
Thank you very much. I've thought long and hard about this because there's only two of us who are business people sitting around this council chamber, and sadly it was leaked to the local paper, and I know that many business people are watching this live stream tonight, and I know they're going to be very disappointed in my decision, but we were elected to this council to be the caretakers of the rates and the economy. So in all fairness, and I am one that has got no income at the moment apart from my council salary, none of my tenants are paying the rates, and this is what the landlords are going through, so it would be very good to say, yes, please, take 10% off the rates, because in the commercial and the industrial, we are paying high rates, but I cannot in all consciousness vote for this notice of motion. It doesn't matter, I will go out and I will go and work in a restaurant and do the takeaway to raise the money to pay for my rates. So I think it's premature, perhaps if this notice of motion had been put up later, when things could be getting worse, and they're all telling us six months, 12 months, we've got in front of us. The council will need to make cuts because, you know, everybody, everybody, everybody's wage, not sorry, most people's wages have been cut dramatically. So we as a council have to supply the essential services to all of our residents, and I think most of our residents, if they sit back and they look at the decision made here tonight, will understand and realise that we, if we all vote for this, against this notice of motion, that we have made the right decision. Yes, I've had resident, the business people today, Heather, you've got to vote for it, you've got to vote for it, and I said, well, sorry, perhaps you'll never talk to me again, I don't care. I was elected to do the right thing, and tonight I am going to vote against this notice of motion. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks. Thanks councillor Marcus for that contribution. Are there any other speakers before I throw back to councillor Khan for a right of reply? No, okay, councillor Khan, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I'd like to start it first acknowledging that councillor, Ken McIlhany made a comment, it has not been discussed. I think the notice of motion is not need to discuss it, what he says, it clearly says it. Now, it clearly outlined why the 10% is needed, and if she heard it, what I've said in my speech was clear why it needed. Top of that, councillor Henry Ballot says that it's $2 per week is what's going to save me. If I multiply by $2 per week, it gives me $104 an year. I don't think so. His council rate is $104 a year, his council rate. The maths got wrong. He did say $2 per week is going to save me.
Point of order, Mr Mayor, is he calling me a liar because I can bring you my rate notice and show you?
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Councillor Khan, I assume you're talking about the mathematics, can you just proceed?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'll be, I'll be quick. I'd just like to say that is exactly why we're needed. If you know that what is happening in this, the Herald Sun have published that, there are many councils who have cut down their expenses, time has been changed. If you believe this notice of motion is because of the election year, it's absolutely a misleading to the resident because what is, that's why I've been elected here, and I know how migrant are feeling it. They won. $1,000 is a lot of money for someone. It covers the one year, if it's a $1,000 cut for 10%, if someone's paying $10,000, it's a lot of money for someone because it can pay a whole year of insurance.
Point of order, Mr Mayor, he's representing the figures.
Councillor Khan, two seconds. Councillor Ballot, what is your point of order?
My point of order is that he claimed that my rate would be $104.
Hang on, hang on, councillor Khan, councillor Ballot, what is the point of order specifically?
Point of order was that he misrepresented the figures that I gave, which was $2.80 per week. Not that my rates were $104, my rates are $1,500, $1,500. Now, I don't know how much your house is worth, but my little townhouse is worth, the rates are worth $1,500.
So, I'm going to end it here councillor Ballot, please refer to the fact it'll be $3 a week if you're going to calculate the mathematics.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just, thank you, Mr Mayor, we're continuing now, everybody's watching it now, it's important...
70 seconds.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to say that, and replying to my fellow councillor Peter Maynard, he said that Ken councillor can't tell us why a 10% cut needed. I'd just like to say that I've been elected, we've all been elected, to support a community hardship. Time is not going to be the same it used to be. Now, we know that how much income we get, yeah, some of us, some of us own the houses, they've been paid off, so we don't have to worry about the mortgage. Some of them outside, listening on Facebook Live, they've got to pay every single thing, the mortgage, the insurance, the household, the car, everything. That is stressing for them. 10% is not much, let's councillors, we can do better than that. Be, come on, make it, make a decision, a strong decision, time when the public needed, the community needed. It's not about the politics, it's not about the who belongs to what, it's all about the hardship, the time going to be changed. The budget can be re-existed. Now, can I say we can borrow the money? I'm not here to make a comment how the maths works, but I'm here to say our CFO is very smart, CEO is very smart, she knows how to make the changes and adjust the budget.
Wind up councillor Khan.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll say that before you vote, think, why are you not voting, why not supporting this motion today? Because the community needed you today. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
He's finished his contribution, so we'll keep going, okay councillor Hooper? All right, with that in mind, we'll now proceed to a vote. All those in favour of councillor Khan's resolution, 7.1, please raise your hand. Okay, all those against, please raise your hand.
I call a division.
We haven't even finalised the vote yet. Thanks, councillor McIlwany, the resolution is lost. Councillor McIlwany has called for a division, so therefore all those in favor, please raise their hand. All those in favor, please raise their hand. Don't change your vote, councillors, thank you. Councillor Khan is in favor, all those against, yes. Councillors Gibbons, Shaw, McIlwany, councillor Maynard, councillor Gilligan, councillor Barlow, councillor Marcus, councillor Arn, and councillor Hooper. Can I clarify, councillor Gilligan's, you're abstaining. Okay, thank you, we'll note that for the record. Excellent, thank you. As mentioned, the resolution was lost. 8.1, council seal 8.1, awarding of contract C2181/19, barbecue and public amenity cleaning. The report is outlined on pages 132 to 136, with the recommendation on pages 132. Councillor Gibbons moves that, yes, councillor Hooper is the second, councillor Gibbons, do you wish to speak to the item?
No, I've explained it.
Thank you, councillor Gibbons, are there any other speakers? Okay, there being none, we'll now proceed to a vote. All those in favor? Against, carried. Item 8.2, the awarding of contract C2187/19, the reconstruction of Galvin Park Soccer Pavilion. The report is on 137 to 140, with the recommendation on 137. Do I have a mover? Councillor Barlow, do I have a senior councillor Maynard? Councillor Barlow, do you wish to speak to the item? Nope. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the item? Councillor Maynard, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did delay my hand going up so councillor Barlow could move this motion. I, I know that he has a special interest in Galvin Park, and certainly, I was going to allow him to say something, but certainly, this allocation of the tender is certainly another part in the puzzle of Galvin Park, another jewel, if you like, in the crown of what will be when it's finished, another prestige development of sporting provision that this council provides, and will continue to provide, unless we have to cut costs to remove building such things. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Maynard. Are there any other speakers for the item? No, there being none, we'll now proceed to a vote. All those in favor of the resolution? Against, carried. Item nine, contract summary there, it's nil. Item 10, questions with notice from the public, Madam CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and due to the changed conditions for tonight's meeting, I will just read out the questions, even though those people who have asked the questions aren't here in the gallery tonight. I'm not going to provide detailed responses verbally this evening, they will actually be provided via the minutes, and they will be recorded as part of the session on Facebook as well, just for completeness. So I'm just going to go through a quick process of just reading out the questions, just to ensure that they have been read. So question one comes from Anav Satie. What is commercial in confidence? How does a document or set of details become commercial in confidence? What's the process involved? Has anyone challenged and been successful in overturning a commercial in confidence document or a set of details? So we do have a detailed response to that question, which will be provided in writing, and also form part of the recorded minutes as well this evening, so thank you for that question. Question two from Anav is also relating to a range of council matters. Which services related to health and wellbeing of Wyndham residents have been downsized or closed, or are in the planning phase to be downsized or closed? Is it true that the departments like Home and Community Care, looking after the most vulnerable residents, has been closed or downsized? Certainly, we will have a very extensive reply to that question as well, given the extent of service currently being provided and will continue to be so. We also...
For the purposes of clarity, Madam CEO, the answer quite directly to the second question is absolutely not.
Well, that's correct, but that'll be provided in fullness in terms of our response.
Sure.
I appreciate it's an unusual situation tonight, we're just receiving questions, it'll be fully documented, the response. So that really does provide all of those questions that we've received tonight, just by way of advice, and we will be providing those detailed responses in writing, and will form the basis of the minutes this evening as well, as I said at the outset, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam CEO. We'll now proceed to item 11, councillor delegates' reports, item 11.1, same thing, report on 141 to 142, with the recommendation on page 142. Do I have a mover? Councillor Gibbons, do I, yes, councillor Maynard will second it. Are there any councillors that wish to speak to the reports? Councillor Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As usual, I read all the delegates' reports quite closely, because I have many interests to trust the council, so not just my cultural diversity one. I draw everyone's attention to page 150, meeting notes. Councillor Khan declared a conflict of interest for the Wyndham North Development Contributions Plan, Project Implantation Plans. I rest my case.
Thank you very much, councillor Barlow. Is there any other councillors that wish to speak to the items? Councillor Khan, you have three minutes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I'd just like to say that, you know, delegate support is here, and it talks about that urban future is my portfolio. We did talk about the smart city, and we know that why we need to speak about this. Can I say it's very disgrace? Very disgrace, very disgrace. Somebody just keep asking, asking, again and again, same question. I think needed speaker and a big mic, and I'm sure I could not wait to get the election over. Then these people will know that, how the community like to see them, behave it. I'd like to say that now, yes, I was declared a conflict of interest. The reason why I declared conflict of interest in my report, Mr. Mayor, because when we do chamber meetings, the council, the portfolio meetings, it's a detail, it's a detail, goes through the more foreign detail. So I have decided there was a time for me to be whiteout and not to sit in a meeting. I decided. Today I decided, and listen carefully, today I decided to stay here. If a council have a problem, go and logically complain about me, I do not give a damn shit. I like to say that on record, because I did the right thing, and I will continue to do the right thing. It's absolute disgrace when people treat a fellow councillors like I've been treated. And I like to say, Mr. Mayor, put in notice now, I respect everybody the way I like to respect. If it's my wish to declare conflict of interest, it's my wish to not declare. There's a protocols. Why people have to put people in such a stress and in such a trauma, it's bullying in front of everyone, it's a live telecast. I like to say I need to be treated equally as I did everybody, and everybody wished to treat it. It's a COVID-19, I can understand, straight my cause to use somebody to speak like this, but I like to say that my report was very good, sir. I've worked with the community, we did the right thing, we talked about smart city, Mr. Mayor, we talked about...
Thirty more seconds to talk to the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, where we can land here, the drones on a city, the good things people need to know, what we're doing in our portfolio. My manager, Aaron, and other committee members have well spoken, they contributed what they need to contribute it, and we are doing very good things come in near future, you will see, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. And I'd like to, let's say that people used to say you don't attend meetings, I do attend meetings, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Khan, for your contribution. Are there any other councillors that wish to speak, preferably to their reports? Councillor McIlwany, thank you.
Of course, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to say I've been very busy, despite we having, having this situation, we can't hold meetings, or we possibly may have virtual meetings. I am having virtual meetings weekly, fortnightly with our local inspector as to what is happening, and as I've said before, 40% of all police station receptions are closed to the public, so that they have to get online. I stress only go to a police station if you have to, otherwise ring Crime Stoppers in an emergency, ring triple O, or ring the other, other alternate number to find out inquiries, but it's really important you only go to a police station as a last resort. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor McIlwany. Is there any other councillors that wish to speak to? Yes, councillor Arn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You have three minutes, thanks.
I'll be short. I just want to say that we, the portfolio committee members have been working very hard, and I do encourage the community to look into these reports, I think it's a very good way to understand what's, what's happening in our city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Arn. Excellent, are there any other speakers that wish to talk to their items? No, there being none, we'll now proceed to a vote. All those in favor of the adoption, please raise their hands. All those against, carried, excellent. Okay, we'll now move to item 13, confidential business. Councillors, can I have a mover to suspend standing orders? Councillor Maynard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move that pursuant to section 89.2 of the Local Government Act 1989, standing orders be suspended, and this meeting of council be closed, the members of the public in order for council to discuss confidential business.
Thank you very much, councillor Maynard. Yes, councillor Khan?
Seconded.
Oh, okay, yep, thanks for that. There being no public here, we'll now proceed to turn off the cameras.